Alrighty, the time is six thirty-three P M and we are officially calling an extra plan commission meeting to order. Roll call please.
Commissioner Chisholm?
President.
Commissioner McDaniel?
Present.
Commissioner Davis? Absent. Commissioner White, excuse? Commissioner Hall? Excuse? Okay. Commissioner Williams, Tanya? Commissioner Hayes Bradford? Commissioner Willis?
Present.
And Mayor Nolan?
Present.
And I'm not missing anybody? Is everybody?
Is everybody? Alright, we have a call, I think. We're down to adoption of the agenda. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda?
Yes.
That being said, is there any additions or deletions from the agenda?
Kind of correction.
What's your current?
My name, so it's spelled incorrectly.
Oh, and it is?
Yeah.
Uh, like on May twenty-eighth, it's all connected.
Yes. This is A S H L E Y.
Oh, and both?
I thought it was E L Y?
The mayor's name is still wrong too. Yeah, absent. Damn, who getting fired for that? Somebody getting fired.
That must be that, it must be using A I to translate.
Alright, was there, uh, anything else anybody sees? We're caught. Alright, and now the floor is open for a motion to adopt the, oh, you know what? That was adoption of the agenda, not the minutes. So, uh, so other than that, before we go down to adoption of the minutes, is everything okay with the way the agenda looks to everybody?
Okay. Oh, do, um, I'm sorry, did I need to add to the miscellaneous or anything? Just formally, okay, just when I get to miscellaneous to?
Oh, yeah.
Get to it, okay, gotcha.
Alright, floor is open for a motion to adopt the agenda as is.
So move.
Support.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. We are down to adoption of the minutes. We did just talk about the corrections that need to be included in the minutes for May twenty-eighth and June tenth on two of twenty twenty-four. Are there any other scrapes, anyone might have?
I have some, I don't know, you all talked about it, you said already.
We kinda in property, that's all. So we are just getting back to it right now.
Okay. My name. Okay, and I, I don't know if you want the continuity of it, but everybody's got a first initial for their first name and then the last name. I don't have my first initial.
Where are you?
On the roll call? I'm Radford.
Is that June minutes or is that?
Yes, it's June.
When I heard, uh, adopting, I was thinking minutes.
No, you did.
Agenda.
And I also, uh, in section two, Ashley's last name has one L.
One of the, one of those Williams.
Oh, true, yes.
I didn't even catch that one.
That, to that point, the continuity of the first initial for our first name, because we got two Williams, you don't know who's making the motions.
Ooh. Which is A I.
You are right.
And then under section six, there's just a typo or misspelling and finishes and is spelled incorrectly. And section nine, public.
I didn't place A I.
Oh, yes, many cities and then, um, also, I'm six, Mayor Nolan's name is spelled wrong there.
Get them all.
For the twenty-eighth, we caught in the present, my name, and I believe we also said that Mayor Nolan's name needed to be corrected for May twenty-eighth, correct?
Yep.
And then was there anything? Not seen anything else for May twenty-eighth. But for June tenth, we have Commissioner Bradford, in the present section needs to be updated from Radford to Bradford. And then whether or not we want to add her first initial for continuity purposes. And then in adoption of the agenda, uh, we're not exactly sure which Commissioner Williams, and then that one needs to be spelled correctly. Then there was another, you said in nine, correct? About six? Six and then nine.
Unfinished business.
Okay.
I'm finished, just spilt wrong.
Oh, yeah.
Last name is wrong.
And the president give my last name.
Okay, got you. Okay. And I believe nine was mentioned, yes.
Yes.
Public, probably, there you go. Anything else?
Alright. Everybody good?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Alrighty, the floor is open for a motion to adopt the mi- the adopt the minutes of May twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four and June ten, twenty twenty-four with the corrections.
So move.
Second, it's very properly moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Looks like for item number four, we are down to a first hearing of the public. These are for anyone from the general public to speak for items not scheduled for a public hearing, but on the agenda. So at this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this agenda, please approach the podium and state your name for the record. Alrighty, hearing none and seeing no movement, we are moving down to public hearings, and we have none. And now I'm moving down to item number six, redevelopment-ready communities, R R C update presentation. Uh, discussion and update on the R R C status for the city of Inkster.
Hi, guys. So a long time no see. There's been a lot going on with the R R C. Um, I'll go through this, um, the main updates. So we are very close to being certified. Uh, some of the main, um, updates include, as you already know, the master plan. We're hopefully about to enter into the draft, uh, portion as McKenna will update us shortly. Um, the capital improvements plan is in progress, and the public participation plan is currently aligned and has been approved by the R R C, and that is included in the packet. If you guys want to take a, um, deeper look into it, um, the public participation plan outlines how we're going to engage with the public. It has five, um, priorities, um, and the first priority is laying the groundwork for who that the team will be, who will come up with the timeline and strategy for engaging the public and what that will look like, including budget. So, um, I'm sure we're gonna have to discuss at a later time, um, who will necessarily take the lead on that?
Well, let me talk about that. We know.
I created it. I was gonna do it. I can't help facilitate it though. Uh, but, uh, no, uh, when you get an opportunity, just go ahead and look at it, um, and I'm sure we can maybe schedule some time to either follow up at a future meeting or, um, does anyone have any questions about it? Have you guys had an opportunity to look at it? Yes, okay. Any questions, um, initially or feedback initially? It's meant to be, um, general so that the details can be fleshed out as we're implementing them. And then there's some, um, appendices in the back that have some samples for like what engagement couldn't look like, including surveys and so forth, so. Are all the, um, engagements with the, the city where the people to add, ask, add to the, uh, plan, their comments, those are all over now? Uh, well, as far as the public participation plan or the master plan? The public participation. As far as the comments, we actually haven't implemented that part yet. So that is the purpose of the public participation plan. Once we get a team, um, of a variety of individuals who represent different interests coming together and deciding what that strategy looks like, then they'll be the ones determining what engagement looks like with the public and where we'll meet them at. And if it, it could be online, it could be in a public space, both traditional and proactive approaches. So of course, traditional could be here or at a city council meeting, but maybe a proactive engagement could be, um, a story, listening session at the complex. I'm just throwing something out there, you know what I mean? Where we can just discuss, you know, people's backgrounds and what they would like to see for the city and so forth. So, um, I do, for example, have an example, um, on how to form a core team on page ten, um, and a sample roadmap with sample timelines and then who the potential core team members could be. So it could be someone from, you know, city council, a social media administrator, a planning and development director, a marketing specialist, police and fire. Then a storytelling session could be a story circle, it could be a workshop, public hearings, focus groups. So that team has to determine how they're gonna get that feedback. Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay. I'm gonna skip over the master plan part because McKenna's here. And, uh, best practice three is almost fully aligned. So it was really about beefing up the planning and community development webpage itself, making sure that we define the processes and point of contact. Um, so if someone was interested in development, who could they contact, email, phone? Um, they wanted us to really advertise, in their words, conceptual review meetings. Um, so someone can meet with someone and say, hey, this is what I want to do, you know, pre-planning meeting essentially or pre-application meeting. Um, they wanted us to have an internal review procedure or policy for staff to follow. So that's this policy here. Um, and it was, how will this look when we receive the application and put the file together? So from pre-application meeting to initial consult to site visit, to getting all the materials together, to initial review, to which bodies should be looking at it and approving it, including planning commission or the Z B A, for example. And then a fee schedule and payment methods available online, the, and then project tracking. The access to information is the last thing that is currently in progress that I'm working on. It's a document of sorts or a webpage where they really want it to be for the public, where it makes it really simple for them to see what the development process looks like. So it could be like a flow chart or something like that. That's, that's what they want to see. And so that's, that should be hopefully completed and ready to review before the month is over. Best practice is fully aligned, best, I'm sorry, best practice for boards and commissions are fully aligned. One of the last things that we had to get through was the actual boards and commission appointment process policy. So that's that one right here, really simple, two pager. And, um, you know, another one was we have to beef up the board and commission application to include, um, expectations and skill sets for the different boards and commissions. So kind of like a job application or a job post of sorts, you know, when you say, hey, if you're gonna apply for this board or commission, these are the type of skills and knowledge we would like to see. Um, and then could you check these boxes if these apply? And then are you willing to get trained? Any feedback or questions about that so far? So training strategy also included in here. We had one before, just needed to be updated. So, um, I'll just point out the goals. So drawn through four are listed here, and that includes, you know, D E I principles, integrating technology-driven training initiatives, um, making sure that we're looking for specific community development initiative, uh, training and revitalization projects, things that would teach us about housing, um, and then, you know, um, uh, what was the other point that I wanted to make? Um, whether or not we were, um, im- implementing a structured training schedule and checking in with each other about whether or not we were actually, um, participating in some of these trainings. Um, also the joint, uh, meeting, um, recommendation. So we're required to at least have one. And I recommended that if, uh, we don't do at least two, um, one or the other could be the capital improvements plan, and they can both be here at planning commission meetings, or they could be on a weekend, I don't know, you ever tell me? But I've, I've put them for planning commission meeting dates that have already been scheduled. So eleven twenty-five, uh, that's where hopefully we'll have the draft of the master plan. Um, and we can review it with the B A, city council and the public, or the capital improvements plan in December, um, also with the P C, Z B A and the public. Any questions or feedback about that? Hopefully it's all making sense. And so and then, um, best practice five, uh, economics, all of them, marketing, these are some of our heavier weighted items that are still pending. Um, marketing plan also currently in process. You have to have some incentive tools. So that could be like tax incentives. Um, how do we get people to come and want to develop here? And then the economic development plan, which I, um, believe McKenna is gonna be helping us on. So in December, we were at thirty-two percent and now we are at sixty-nine percent with everything that's been completed. We're almost there. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. So hopefully by February, um, not only will we have our master plan finished, but we'll also be R R C certified. Awesome, awesome. Thank you.
Any questions here? For the input guys? Alright, thank you. Uh, here now going down to item number seven, master plan update. Update status of the city of Inksters master plan from McKenna and Associates Consultants. What do you think?
Hello, everyone. Oh, Paul Erbeal from McKenna. Thank you for having us this evening. Uh, my colleague Donovan is here with me as well. Um, and as was just mentioned, we're going to give an update on the master plan process. Real quick, uh, we're just gonna talk about where we've been and what we've been doing since we talked to you last. Um, we're gonna run through some takeaways from the public engagement that we've completed. We're gonna talk about goals and objectives, um, at a high level and in your, what was not in your electronic packet, but was on your seat or in, in front of you for today. Um, with some draft goals and objectives and, uh, a recap of the goals and objectives from the twenty seventeen master plan. Between this meeting and, and your next meeting, what we're hoping to do is we're gonna send you a survey about the relevance of those to see how, um, for one thing, just your thoughts about what, if anything, in the twenty seventeen master plan is, is or is not relevant that we should promote. But what we have done is drafted based on the engagement that we've heard so far, drafted the beginnings of a new set of goals and we'll, we'll, we'll be asking your opinion about both of those things. Um, so this summer, we, uh, conducted a series of public engagement activities. Um, and that was, we, we were doing that and then doing technical research, demographic analysis. Um, and doing the, the parts of the plan drafting that we could do at our desks that were not entirely dependent on public engagement. Um, we're at a sort of an inflection point now where we, we've completed the early engagement and we're ready to start, uh, um, nailing down the recommendations and, and, um, pushing forward the plan drafting. Um, so we're in September at that blue line, um, of a next milestones of how we'd like to, I would like to propose to interact with you going forward, um, to bring a draft to you that is ready for release for the public and get, uh, that draft into the, uh, the required public comment period for an eventual adoption. Um, so we, we conducted these, um, public engagement activities. There was a survey open to the public, uh, between June and August of this year. We set up, uh, visioning boards where we were, uh, accepting comments and, uh, sticky note sort of prioritization feedback at the library, at city hall, um, at the twin towers and at the recreation center. We got some comments on that, um, the idea being as people were cycling through those places that they normally go anyway, they'd have a chance to learn about the master plan um, and provide a little bit of input. We had an open house in this room on July ninth. Um, we attended national night out on August seventh and, um, solicited input from people that were there already, uh, just a little quicker. Conversations about a lot of the same subject area. And then just last week, we conducted, uh, a series of roundtables, uh, small group, focus group discussions with some stakeholders. Uh, and to get into a little bit more depth of conversations, what we had heard so far. And so at a high level, I'll just, uh, go through, we're in the process of sort of, uh, synthesizing all of this still as far as how they all relate to each other and the things that we heard consistently. Some of that stuff is starting to pop up. Um, we were intentionally asking about housing, uh, because of the nature of this master plan update, and it came through the state housing development authority, and so we're obligated to have that discussion, but it came up fairly naturally as well. Um, there's, what we heard was that there's a concern about rising prices, um, and home affordability. Uh, there's a desire for support for increased homeownership. Um, and there is some support for housing strategies and sort of seeing what we can do to adapt the rules to, uh, broaden the amount of housing that is available in Inkster. Um, and pretty, another pretty consistent message is the desire to, um, facilitate the development of more amenities and the stuff of daily life within the city, although, um, there are a lot of amenities that are reachable. Um, the feedback we heard was that there's a desire to induce the development of those things within the city of Inkster. Um, and there was an appreciation of the amount of parks that, uh, exist in Inkster. And when we asked what could be improved, uh, those answers, we're talking about adding equipment and infrastructure and activating it so the parks can, uh, better facilitate community gatherings. Um, and national night out, we asked a similar set of questions. Um, and again, there, like, I'm presenting these as what we heard on those nights. You'll see that there's, uh, there are some themes that pop up. Uh, these are just sort of notable takeaways, uh, from each separate event. The, we heard a lot more about the variety of housing types at that event. Um, the, uh, the, sort of the cultural institutions and the amenities that are in Inkster are valued. And we asked a question about, um, subject matters, housing, uh, parks and recreation, transportation, and asked just simply what, what people's opinions were about how, how, what were the highest priority things for the master plan to address? And what came out of that were the categories of housing and redevelopment. Um, just last week, we conducted, uh, a series of roundtables. We scheduled more than we were able to successfully conduct. Um, but we talked to a group of realtors and real estate agents. We talked, we had a session about workforce and economic development, and then we had a group that we titled community groups, but we had a representative from the library board, uh, three representatives from the, uh, motorcycle club and a pastor from, uh, from I'm blanking on his congregation, but it's the congregation that, uh, is housed in the former Holy Family Church.
Um, T P C Pastor Sykes.
Thank you, yes. Um, and so, so these conversations, as I said, they're about an hour long and they were just sort of focus group kind of things. They're extremely valuable since they just happened last week. The full write-up was not in your packets. Um, we were issuing your packet sort of in between the two sessions. But just a couple takeaways, um, the, there's a clear, the, there's a clear message through several of these conversations that people love Inkster and they do that, and they love it because of the sense of community and camaraderie. Um, there is a, another consistent message we heard was a desire to be more development friendly. Um, as Commissioner Williams just spoke about with the R R C, uh, procedures, sort of along the same lines, but, um, a desire for more predictable, rigorous and consistent processes and procedures. And then, um, as was mentioned in other events, support for increased homeownership and keeping investment within the community. Um, I pulled out just a few survey results and the entire write-up was in your packets, but I'm happy to talk about any of it. But again, this is just sort of high-level highlights that we thought were relevant or that we see carrying forward into plan recommendations. The, uh, the word cloud is open-ended responses on surveys, uh, specifically towards housing. And I think the summary of that, um, is that many respondents to the survey, there were fifty-six respondents. Um, identified things like home repair assistance and rental subsidy programs that would be extremely useful in, um, helping people maintain the existing housing. And then that question, um, in the lower right corner, which is how important is it to increase the diversity of housing options available in Inkster? Um, fifty-four percent said very important and thirty-three percent said important. Um, so a fair amount of, that, that's where we come up with the conclusion that there is, uh, support and appetite to, um, find ways to develop more housing of many different varieties in the city. Um, we heard a lot about managing vacant lots eventually to, to repurpose them and to have active development on them. Um, but sort of stewardship as well in the interim until that happens. Um, when we heard, we asked about transportation, I'm gonna talk in, after this agenda item about the state streets for all program, which has some overlap with this. Um, but we heard uh, that in some places it's not very comfortable to walk. Uh, we heard about sidewalk network, concerns about speeding and lighting. Um, and some support for assisting or enabling mobility, especially for seniors that can otherwise not get around. Um, this is a question about what sort of amenities are available. Uh, on the graph, you see that there's a lot of amenities that are, um, the green means it's needed, the blue says it means it's just enough. Um, and so that is an overlay or sort of the same message, I think, that there's a desire for more amenities within the Inkster city borders. It's not that they're not available to people, but they are by and large outside of the community. Um, and then there's an interest, interesting comment about just facilitating the development of businesses or encouraging and trying to attract businesses that can serve larger market areas so that they can survive in this community. Any questions about that?
Yeah. Yes. I was just talking to some of the developers and business owners, they would like to have a workshop or a, an opportunity to chime in on what they would like to see with respect to our zoning, uh, our business districts and what they would like to do. So hopefully we can set that up. If we can do it by Zoom, whatever is easiest for everybody.
Absolutely, yeah. Okay.
Anybody else? Alrighty, thank you.
Okay. Um, so goals and objectives, as I said, this is, um, we, we brought some to you to read between now and the next meeting. Um, I have them up on the slides. It's sort of walls of text, so I'm not going to read every word, but, um, as I said, what we'd like is if you could, after this meeting, read those goals or, uh, and objectives that I'm going to run through at a high level now. Um, provide us some feedback in between and then we'll come back to report back and sort of finalize the list. Um, both, I, I don't have the twenty seventeen plan goals on this, on this slide, but that is just, uh, um, the, the goals that we do have are things that we directly heard from public engagement. So we know that that's not a one-hundred percent complete list. Um, we didn't hear a lot about the development of downtown, for example, but, um, it seems like that is a good thing to carry forward and continue to pursue. Um, but it's the beginning of it. But it's the beginning of the list, so. We have also started to draft objectives based on what we've heard and based on where we think the dots could be connected, but. Goal for housing, um. We think a good one is to support high quality housing stock that offers the diversity of housing types and centers affordability, so goals. Aspirational statements that say where you want to be, objectives a little bit more specific and measurable. Um, and then the final step is action plans, their action items that fit directly under the objectives. That we will bring to you in a later meeting, um, so here's a list of those about uh. Ways that we think the zoning ordinance might be amended, um, collaborations to enhance or collaborations to add and. The, in this one specifically, um, specific directions about standards for different housing types that might be relevant. Um, encourage a diverse commercial and industrial sector that offers a variety of job opportunities for all skill sets that one sense, it's like, yes, that's um. Motherhood and apple pie, it's, it seems not controversial, but um. It, we were pulling out the things, we're trying to translate what we heard into sort of policy-related statements. Um, and we did hear about the economic development thing in the public engagement. One, one significant thing about economic development, especially as it relates to the RRC lens, is that's focused on place-based. Development, um, and the uh, development of vacant lots for appropriate commercial uses, commercial industrial development, but um. As opposed to straight business attraction, trying to facilitate the physical environment and the regulatory environment to, to enable your development. Um, which will then create jobs and amenities. So here's a set of objectives, uh, promote, the goal that we started, are starting with is promote redevelopment that fills gaps in the housing and business needs of Inkster residents. Again, there's a couple of specific things about redevelopment properties, uh, that first one is about the amenities that we heard the most about. Hying some of the. Already existing information and strategies from the Wayne County Retail Recovery Plan. Um, into the master plan, into our, and in our process, the master plan process. And then uh, that last one is about code enforcement and just a continual improvement. To uh, bring existing buildings into line when they are not. Develop an effective transportation network that offers safe and efficient, non-motorized and motorized transportation options for people to travel to destinations in Inkster and. I think just the key point is there is, it's important to make sure that um, people are able to walk places. Um, the, the road network is important, but in all over southeast Michigan, it's overbuilt, so um. Pursuing to the extent that it's appropriate and necessary, um, things like improving the sidewalk network. To eliminate gaps and uh, eliminating barriers to put uh, connectivity between neighborhoods. And then parks and recreation offer while maintained parks that improve health and wellbeing through recreational activities that are accessible for all Inkster residents. That, this is, uh, I think the objectives here, at least at this point, we're talking about more partnerships, um. Some ways that environmental stewardship could be increased, uh, as maintenance happens and as redevelopment happens. And so, as I said, that's a, is a set of goals, all of those things came directly from things that we've heard. We will flesh those out with carryover from the twenty seventeen plans and anything else that comes up, that's what we're seeking your help and your input on.
Alright, good evening. Good seeing you again, my name is Donovan, so I'll be going over just some of the next steps as we get to the next phase of the master plan. Um, so when we came a few months ago, we shared a schedule with you. Uh, we outlined the previous uh, twenty seventeen plan as well as this plan and how we were kind of readjusting. Consolidating some chapters to create this new document, so what you see on the screen, on the right side of the screen is that outline. With all the subsections in between, um, but where we are today is uh, as Paul indicated, where we are on schedule. Um, with the timeline we presented before. Um, so as we are today, the executive summary, you'll see that drafted, uh. That part of the document is kind of always evolving and living, but you'll see that drafted in your October meeting, which I'll share later. Uh, the Inkster today, um, and the community input, which you've heard about today, those sections are pretty much drafted. Um, and are in technical review. Um, we are currently drafting the housing and neighborhood section. Um, as well as the economic development section, there's a lot of, you know, deep technical analyzing that goes into those sections, so those you will also see. In the next meeting or so. Uh, transportation and mobility is completed, um, as well as natural systems and resiliency, uh, those sections are internal review. Um, and based on your comments at our next meeting, uh, you'll start to see the finalization of the strategic action plan. Which will include the goals and objectives we went over today and any revisions. Um, as well as starting to lay out that action plan, so you can start to see how we can actually accomplish those objectives over five to ten year period. Uh, just so, just your next three-ish meetings, uh, just some things to expect. In October, when we come back, uh, we will be looking to get feedback from uh, you all. Related to the goals and objectives we reviewed today, I'll have some more details on the next slide and then, as I mentioned, the action plan, we'll start to go over that. Uh, by November, your November planning commission meeting, you will receive what will be a mostly complete document. Uh, roughly ninety-five percent, we say ninety-five because once it goes draft, there's a. A sixty-three day period where the public can provide comments and it may change a little bit, and then we also close out on the executive summary. Um, so we say ninety-five percent, but it's going to be mostly complete. Then in December, uh, city council has to actually approve that thirty-day notice. Um, so November, you will say, go ahead, send it to council to uh, make the notice, in December, they'll notice it will. And sometime in late December, January, we anticipate that window will start. Um, and then you can expect that to go on for about two months and then we'll come back in March sometime around then. Uh, for adoption, so that's just the kind of schedule and that should be in line with what we proposed um, a few months back. Um, and then my last piece, and I appreciate Paul for not stealing my thunder on this slide. But a part of your homework is we will be sharing with you. A link that has a survey to kind of guide of the process where you're going through your goals and objectives, so you don't got to go through that process of. Drafting the email and doing all that stuff, we'll send you a link, um, you can go through the questions with this document next to you as a guide. Um, and then we'll take that and use that to make our revisions.
And that's the feedback that you also want us to compare to our twenty seventeen.
And we'll, we'll always take a narrative or emails if you would rather do it that way, we just, we're trying to make it less of your time that's required.
And I think that's my last slide, so if you have any questions for me or Paul.
Yeah, let's go over the timeline real quick, so we're all on the same page, so we should have a rough draft in November, by the time we meet in November, which is towards the end of November. Then it has to be published for the public for sixty-three days. They can make comments, add to it. Alright, and then we come back in December, the city council now, what we have to pass something, a thirty-day notice for adoption.
So in your uh, December meeting, you'll be making a recommendation to city council, so they can initiate the sixty-three days.
Well, they start to secure it in December.
And then once. Whenever they meet, following your meeting in December, so they may meet in January. They may start that window in January, and then the sixty-three days from that council meeting.
So what's stopping us from starting the sixty-three days, the first council meeting in December?
Nothing per se, as long as the timing, I think that, is there a public notice to do that sixty-three days? We'll confirm it, but it's just a, a timing thing, so as long as we can make the dates line up, it's.
Well, and I guess we, we set it out this way and I heard your RRC schedule, that's the first time we heard of it. We can work to align, I think, I think this sets up pretty well for. We don't want, we didn't want to come, the first time we show you the draft, to ask you to put out for public, so, to the public, so we were. Building in a meeting there, if you had some things that absolutely needed to be addressed, who are comfortable with it, and we come back.
I guess putting it out to the public, you're still asking feedback.
And it's still draft, yes.
I don't think we, we need to necessarily wait another month.
People put that draft out at all.
So, and the training plan, I see, you know, um. That's one of the ones that I'm recommending as a joint session, and it will also satisfy that requirement to have a joint meeting if we all come to the eleven twenty-five. PC meeting.
Good luck on getting counted. I think the planning commission might be more reliable. Yeah, I mean, that sounds good though. So we can get started, if everybody checks out, reviews it, then we can get that started.
Right, because uh, to your point, um, because you don't want to delay, right, in between that and the council meeting, so then it's like if council. If we can get them to show up, then they've already kind of seen it. And ZBA.
And I would love to get, since we uh, you want to have a rough draft done in November, before prior to next meeting, we should probably have that Zoom meeting. Um, because there's a couple of potential developers, they said they want to chime in on some of the zoning stuff, where we're going to do what. And so I think that it makes sense since we're going through this process. Get that information from them now. Okay, whenever you guys got, we, we can bake ourselves a bit, so.
Anybody else?
To what extent, I know, um, of course zoning uh, has a, a large role in, in some of this, but. Um, is it both being done internally and in partnership with McKenna, or is McKenna taking the lead? I guess I just want to understand.
Derek, have you, what, what input have you had on the zoning thus far? I haven't.
Essentially, we're, we're reviewing what they're, they're looking at, and if we see something, we're going to add something. Be something, say something.
So we, we, we're basically looking at some of the, we're looking at where it's zoned now. And potential change of the zone, some of the zonings, to spur some of the new development that we're talking about, so. We can probably do that at that same meeting, that Zoom meeting, kind of outline the areas we were looking at, so we're all looking at a map maybe on the Zoom meeting. Of the city, and then we can kind of talk about some of the things we talked about, you can give us your input, your thought. Developers can chime in and then, you know, we could come out with, you know, some ideas.
It's not a problem.
Alrighty, thank you gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
We are moving down now to item number eight, safe streets for all. Discuss the safe streets for all grant from McKenna and Associates Consult.
Well, again. So. This uh. Derek, it's part of a task, Mr. Dowdell is a part, part of a task force that. Um, or a working group with the cities of uh, Garden City, Wayne. Um, Westland. Together, um, before my involvement with the master planner, before I met all of you. Um, those four cities applied for and won a uh, grant from the federal government, from federal highway administrations. That the bipartisan, bipartisan infrastructure law, set aside money that seeks to um. Man and identify dangerous areas of the street network, and then. There's two sorts of grants, there's a planning grant and there's an implementation grant. Those four cities together won a planning grant to do that upfront identification of. Where the most dangerous parts of the road network are and where the people are that most need um. Most need improvement to the network for reasons such as they don't have cars and they need to walk to the bus stop. And so. That grant was successful, that planning grant was successful, um, the four communities are working together. Unfortunately, a little bit asynchronous with the master plan, but we um. We're pulling forward some of the engagement and the conversation about transportation that we did for the master plan for the safe street. For the beginnings of the, of the identification. What will come out of this planning grant after a lot of technical analysis that um, we're working with engineers, traffic engineers to. Analyze crash data and analyze where intersections are signed across all four communities. And understand that the first thing, the first requirement of this is to identify, like I said, where the most dangerous parts of the um. Road network are, and then we're also doing some demographic analysis and some comparative. Analysis to identify where, as I said, um. There's requirements on the money to ensure that people that need it most get a majority of the funds, so we're identifying census tracts. That are, that are um. There's federal terms for transportation disadvantaged communities and things like where the highest percentage of senior citizens are and where the um. Characteristics like that. So, I apologize, I don't have sides for this, but the memo that was in your packet is on the screen, um, I think the, the most important thing is that. Uh, you four communities were among the first in in Michigan and you'll be first in line, so. We're doing the safe streets for all action plan between now and uh. Twenty twenty-five, mid twenty twenty-five will be the, the, this report we publish and then. You four will be first in line to do implementation grants to road improvements based on this information.
What, what are four cities again?
Garden City, Inkster.
Garden City, Inkster, Wayne, Westland. So staff from those four places, including Mr. Dowdell. Um, I've met a couple of times, we're in the early stages, uh, since it's a federal grant, it took us a very long time to execute the grant agreement. Um, but we are now ready to run with this as well. The, the memo, we, we shared this with all four city councils in the springtime when uh, we, we heard about the grant and. It's taken us almost until now to get all that uh, grant agreement signed and uh, get into gear, but we are now in gear. So there's some, just some stuff about what is in the plan, here's a very high level timeline. We're going to be doing all this technical analysis uh, this fall, where we'll be bringing a uh, a draft plan. Not Michigan uh, comprehensive plan adoption procedures, but there are um, procedures, we'll have to bring them to each of the four. Uh, legislative bodies eventually to adopt it, and then uh, the final report will be done in October twenty twenty-five. In that memo, there's some fact sheets and some press releases about the program itself and how, how it's. So it's a part of the bipartisan infrastructure law, but um. Just who else has, has won it and uh, what it does, but the highest, the, the. Elevator speech about it is that it's money to try to um, reduce the amount of dangerous accidents on the road network from. Overdesigned or poorly designed streets. Happy to answer any questions about that.
Questions any about, Commissioner Williams?
So regarding um, this. Program. Have we started the process to identify in the city of Inkster what areas would be of greatest concern?
We have just started, and since we knew this was coming, when we did the workshop, we sort of did a, you know, a, a. In-person version of where do you have problems walking, that, that's very anecdotal. We just, in the last two weeks, got permission from all four cities to pull that data, uh, so we have crash data. Uh, through twenty twenty-three, I think, so it's fairly current and it's um. Our engineering partners are just starting to crunch it and sort of make maps of where, where they, where the um, accidents are and where the most dangerous places are.
And the goal is to reduce it by or to a certain number, right? So do we have an idea of what we want that number to be?
This is a, it, it's branded differently because it's the infrastructure law, but it's um, very highly rated, related to vision zero, which. The goal of that was no deaths. And no serious. The, like definitely fatalities, but um, fatalities and serious casualties from uh, automobile or from vehicle accidents.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Alrighty, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are down to item number nine, unfinished business, does not look like we have any. Item number ten, new business. Don't have any. Uh, down to miscellaneous.
Oh, I think I covered most of it, really, but since we're here. Um, I would just kind of want to quickly add, is it possible for us at the next meeting to, like, we have to come prepare with our feedback to McKenna? Um, can we also come prepared to maybe discuss what? That first part of the public participation plan could look like, like, who could take the lead with that? I understand that you guys are all like you. I, I, if, if I am doing a lot. I'm doing a lot. I'm doing a lot. I have a few things in the queue and if I had to be honest, I don't know that is realistic for me to, to take that part on at this time when I'm still trying to finish up some of these other RRC requirements, including the marketing plan and like I said, the development guide and a few other things, so. So with that being said, can we add that to the agenda next time? And maybe people kind of think about it, like I said, give you a little time to look it through and see what the public participation plan is. It's not meant to necessarily be all of, you know, the planning commission, maybe one representative from the planning commission or even one lead from the planning commission who can make sure that there is another leader or steward who will make sure that that group gets together and implements the plan, if that makes sense.
Putting on for, it'll be next month's meeting.
Yeah, 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 October's meeting.
Actually plenty of time.
Yeah, to review it, but you know.
Okay.
Put that out there. Think about it. We can discuss it at October's meeting.
Alright.
Who we maybe even think would be good, reach out to, invite to participate or be on that group. Thank you. That's it.
Anybody else for miscellaneous? Alrighty, we're down to item number twelve, second hearing of the public for items not scheduled for your public hearing or on the agenda. At this particular time, anyone from the general audience who wishes to approach and address this body, feel free to do so. And we are down to item number thirteen, adjournment. The floor is open for a motion to adjourn. It's been properly moved in second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. This meeting is now adjourned at seven twenty-five P.
Yes, sir.